Yeah, we gotta get out of here. I missed pressing the wrong button several, several weeks ago. And every time, I get a bad speed conversion test rates. So during a second, I had to turn it off. So I don't, when I think about it, I don't.
It's such a.
Fire. I'm actually lucky.
Hi, Mayor, nice to meet you.
Welcome.
I think I read your bio when they sent that out. All right, before we get started, can we do a quick mic check?
Chuck.
Hello, hello.
Hello.
Chuck.
Hello.
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 Check, check.
Counselor Johnson. All right.
I was supposed to be here to make sure the mic works. Mayor.
I like mics.
No, we had notice. All right, while we are waiting for Counselor Pete to arrive, we will go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is the Yaden Borough Council Legislative Meeting, May 16, 2024. We will start with our pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, veritable, and just for all.
All right, can we proceed with roll call, beginning with our esteemed mayor?
Mayor Hempkins.
Present.
President Monroe.
Present.
Vice President Roelklaub.
Present.
Counselor Beatty.
Present.
Counselor Truheart.
Present.
Counselor Trent.
Present.
Counselor Pete. Counselor Johnson.
Present.
Solicitor Kilkeny.
Here.
Penone engineering is excused. Tax collector Hughes.
Present.
Finance director is present, madam president, you have a call.
Thank you very much. We will proceed with our citizens forum. I will start with Liz Elect Navaj.
I'll make everybody else that follows me feel tall by making this really low. I know last time that was a little disturbing.
How kind of you.
Somebody'd have to pull it down after Solomon. At one of the public safety meetings, Chief Giomarcos stated that his attempt at the accreditation process would be at no cost to residents because he had gotten a grant. On the AP list, there is $12,500 to Aspirant Consultant Group LLC for an accreditation policy manual. Will we be reimbursed this $12,500 by that grant? This one month alone, we're paying $11,138 for police uniforms. This one month is about the same as the entire year of 2021, which was the last time Counselor Monroe was president and the last full year Chief Paparo served as police chief. Of course, I don't begrudge the expensive body armor for our new officers, four of them at $1,100 each, but $3,324 is for shirts alone? How many shirts does $3,324 get us? What are they, $50 each? 60 shirts? Why on earth would every officer need several new shirts this month all at once? We just bought complete uniforms for the newest four officers in March. We spent $678 each. Last year, we spent $24,000 on uniforms. Having spent $24,000 last year, which was $4,000 over budget, I would think no officer is going around looking threadbare that we suddenly need to buy $3,324 worth of shirts. Are the residents being required to pay $3,324,000 for shirts just for the sake of one man's vanity? Is this simply so Chief Giomarco can replace our Yaden Borough Police Patches, which have the Borough logo and the flag, with generic Keystone Patches? Simply to erase another chief's accomplishments? And what happened to the new metal badges we bought all the police officers just a few years ago? The ones with the flag, because this is the home of Flag Day? Why aren't they being worn by our officers? Why is the flag being removed from the police uniform? This meaningless change is wasteful and fiscally irresponsible, throwing things aside we paid for with our hard-earned money. The level of pettiness being displayed is unbecoming for anyone, but especially a police chief. Using our tax money for Vandy projects is unacceptable, just as it was when Lauren did it with her banners.
All right, there seems to be a lot of questions in there. So would you mind sharing it via email so we can make sure that the questions can be addressed? I think the lowest hanging fruit would be whether the cost for the accreditation would be reimbursed through our grant.
We actually received the grant funding in. It's a total of $187,000 for the police department and the accreditation is a part of that, yes.
Okay. And I do believe that some of the uniforms are contractual requirement?
That is true as well, Madam President.
All right. But we can give you some, I guess, more in-depth answers if you kind of send us a list of the questions. All right. Anna?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
With regards to the accounts payable list, I had a very similar question. I saw that there was a, most of the shirts and trousers, they actually listed an individual officer. So I understood that, but there was something which was over $3,300. It looked like it was a bulk purchase for shirts. So I did have a question with regards to, like, the previous resident. Why are we ordering something in bulk? And was it to, because we're replacing all the shirts so that they can put a different patch on their shirt? So if we could look into that and let us know with regards to that, that would be greatly appreciated. One of the other questions that I have, with regards to engineering cost, we know that a lot of the engineering cost is actually covered by grant money, but we can't relatively see that with regards to when something is on the AP list, if it's being covered by the grant. If there's some way that we could readily be able to tell if a particular expense is being covered by a grant or if there's another way that we can take care of that. Concerned with regards to engineering costs, want to make sure that, I know it's a very reputable firm and there's a lot of cost in there and we do have grants covering it, but I want to make sure that we're on target with regards to that just because we know that we have to really watch out with regards to our expenses. And then the other question that I have is zoning solicitor, Rudolph Clark. I saw that there was actually an expense for him and I'm not quite sure why we were carrying that expense because as far as I'm aware, there were no zoning hearings recently held. So not quite sure why there would be another expense with regards to him at this point in time. So if we could, let us know with regards to that, I'd greatly appreciate it.
Randolph Clark, that was from the April, I'm sorry, the March zoning hearing that took place regarding 708 and 1/2 Church Lane.
Oh, okay, so it was just delayed?
It was just delayed in their billing.
Okay.
Like their bills, their bill came in after the last AP list, so that's why it's on this AP list.
Okay. Thank you for that information, do appreciate it.
All right. Mr. Nichols, are we on target for what we have budgeted versus what we are actually spending for our engineering fees?
We are, Madam President. I just made a note to see, and I actually thought about this today because I do notice that there are a lot of things being paid for by grants that the average person wouldn't know. So we need to figure out a way to have it on the AP list, maybe separate it, that shows a chart of accounts just for grants so that everyone knows what's grant-related and not.
You want to reformat?
I don't.
Sheila's AP list?
Yeah, I was afraid to ask her to do that, but. But there's a way, I mean, if we set up another chart of accounts, it's a way in which the system will automatically generate it.
Okay.
But the thing is, how the AP list reads is based off of the bank account that those funds come from. So we don't have a grants bank account, per se.
We could add an asterisk, covered by grants.
We can do that.
I mean, we also have something very simple, covered by a grant. We also have a running tab of what we are receiving in grants that's published in our newsletter as well. So I know that's manual tracking, but we do report it that way. All right. Yes.
Still from last week?
Oh, I didn't.
I haven't.
And Madam President, if I could just add a comment because I work for a nonprofit and a lot of our funding comes to grants. So when we do our reporting, particularly to our board and to our funders with our expense report, there is a column that's indicating what expenses are paid by what grant. So that can just be added pretty easily.
It can. I'm just not telling Sheila, so there's that. All right, so seeing no more, no additional citizens forums, I will close citizens forum and ask for consideration to approve the April 11, 2004 caucus meeting minutes. Is there a motion? Having been moved and properly seconded on the question? Hearing none, I'd like to call for a roll call vote.
President Monroe.
Yes.
Vice President Roelklaub.
Yes.
Counselor Beatty.
Yes.
Counselor Truheart.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Pete.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
The vote is unanimous, the motion carries. Up for consideration is the April 18, 2024 legislative meeting minutes. Can we have a motion?
Second.
Having been properly seconded on the question? Hearing none, all in favor, can I get a roll call vote?
President Monroe.
Yes.
Vice President Roelklaub. Counselor Beatty.
Yes.
Counselor Truheart.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Pete.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
All right, the vote is unanimous, the motion carries. We will next to our mayor's report.
Madam President, my mayor's report stands submitted at caucus with the proviso that Flag Day is, Flag Day is June 15 with that correction. There ends my report, thanks.
Thank you very much. My report was going to be about Flag Day, but Counselor Beatty made it here, so I'll leave that to her. Just the reminder for Flag Day. Next, we will have our manager's report.
Madam President, my report stands submitted at caucus.
Thank you very much. Our solicitors report.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Just a couple matters to update council on. The litigation that was authorized by council on Frank Francis matter has been filed with the court and accepted here in Delaware County. It's been given to Delaware County Sheriff's Office, who's going to have to transfer it to Philadelphia Sheriff's Office for service. We're going to do everything we can possibly do to get that served as we know that's been appointed in June here, employing any means that we can. Also too, Ms. Marcini drafted a letter, which has been sent to Judge Portisano, who's the president judge of the Delaware County Court of Complies, to talk about the various scheduling issues and service issues in our official report and questing a meeting. I know she previously talked to Mr. Musi, who's, I guess, a solicitor for that, but there's been no resolution. So just talk only to Judge herself was the right way to go. Obviously, our offices worked closely with the police on the amending of the towing ordinance, which I believe is on your agenda to start in the fall of tonight. And I believe that includes my report.
Thank you. Are there any updates about what our applications made it to the county council agenda for the two?
I, Ms. Marcini spoke to, I don't know.
So I have, I do have an update. The Delaware County Planning Director did reach out to the Borough and requested more information of the engineer. That was on last Thursday. The engineer did respond on this past Tuesday. So it hasn't gone to county council yet. It's dealing with the Delaware County Planning Department.
Thank you. All right, our tax collectors' report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. I want to remind the residents that May 31, which is on a, I think it's on a Saturday.
Right.
Is the last day of the face amount for paying your taxes. That following Monday will be June and the taxes will be at 10% penalty. So if you can, try to get them in by May 31. The, we're working on the deposits that were sent directly to Republic Bank. I think the system is working now and it's just a matter of catching up with them. So I anticipate being finished with them. Hopefully, no later than the first Monday in June, which is also starts the penalty phase of collection. From April 1st to April 30, the taxes collected face amount was $80,499.84. There was still some at discount, $110.57. None at penalty. For a total of $80,389.27. And Mr. Nefis, Finance Director, the real estate portion of that was $50,299.87. So ends my report.
Thank you very much. Next, we will move on to our engineers' report.
The engineer didn't have anything outside of the two demolition applications in which they did respond to the Delaware County Planning Department on this past Tuesday. Oh, they do have one other thing that they're waiting for me on. The $500,000 LSA grant that we received for the construction of a new recreation center, a request was submitted for us to repurpose those funds because it's not feasible for us to instruct a new recreation center at this point in time. So we are having a meeting on Monday, I believe it is, with the input of council, of course, obviously, in an email out how we could reallocate that half a million dollars in it. The recommendation from the state was that it should say, it would be better if it stayed within the purpose of what we submitted it for, so like recreational things, outdoor space, something like that. So just so you can have it in your mind as we're thinking about what we can do with those funds. Me, the engineer, and Crystal are having a meeting on Monday so that we can prepare to submit that information back to the state.
Thank you very much. Next is our finance report. Up for consideration is the accounts payable list for May 2024. Is there a motion? Having been moved and seconded on the question? Hearing none, can we have a roll call vote, please?
President Monroe.
Yes.
Vice President Roelklaub.
Yes.
Counselor Beatty.
Yes.
Counselor Truheart.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Pete.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
The vote is unanimous, the motion carries. Up for consideration is the accounts payables additions list for May 2024. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Having been moved and seconded on the question? Hearing none, please proceed with the roll call vote.
President Monroe.
Yes.
Vice President Roelklaub.
Yes.
Counselor Beatty.
Yes.
Counselor Truheart.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Pete.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Next, up for consideration is the cash balance report. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Having been moved and seconded on the question? Hearing none, can we proceed with the roll call vote?
President Monroe.
Yes.
Vice President Roelklaub.
Yes.
Counselor Beatty.
Yes.
Counselor Truheart.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Pete.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
That vote is unanimous, the motion carries. Next, we'll move on to ordinance and zoning.
Good evening, council and residents. I would ask the council to accept the report that was read by Inspector White in my absence at the last caucus meeting, which was last week.
Thank you very much. Public Works?
I'd also like to accept it as next week's caucus meeting. Any questions?
Thank you very much. The flags and flowers look nice. Public Safety?
The Chief of Work stands and submitted to caucus.
All right, so under the police department report, we do have consideration for the advertisement of ordinance number 2024, there's 003, concerning the immobilization of vehicles. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Having been moved and properly seconded on the question?
Madam President, I would just want to add that prior to it being advertised, there are a few grammatical errors that just go through it and pre-read it to make sure that it's grammatically correct.
Okay. Mr. Nichols, do we have the final version or are there additional?
I'll double-check. Solicitor Marcini sent?
There was one on the 14th that I believe that was sent to you.
Correct.
I'll talk to him about myself. Mr. Nambul, the chief, will make sure that.
Yeah, we'll thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Vice President Roelklaub?
So I actually have a question with respect to Section 285-91D, recovery of the vehicle. So I was just a little confused. It said, it says, "Any vehicle which has been immobilized pursuant to the provisions of this section may be recovered by the following: A, depositing of the collateral required for his appearance before a district justice to answer for each delinquent parking violations; or paying the amount of the fine, penalty, and court costs, if any, for each delinquent parking violation; and the payment of the fees as required by the Borough." So the, if a person opted to appear before the judge, and it should say his slash her, or them.
All appear as.
Yeah. So if they decided to go before the judge and so are, and the judge says, you know, you have to pay this, that's not outlined in here. It should say something about, you know, pursuant to the final decision of the judge.
I hear what you're saying. I think that provision was, there would be an adjudication of, you know, any violation that led to towing. But I think that that was put in just to make sure before anything was freed up, that essentially all the Borough fees were paid. I believe that was the purpose, maybe I'm missing.
Yeah, but this section is kind of convoluted because it just says you can appear before the judge or pay the amount of fine and penalty and fees. But it doesn't say, you know, if the judge issues a ruling that we have to abide by that ruling.
Depositing collateral required in your in 285-91D.
Right.
So any vehicle which has been immobilized pursuant to the provision of this section may be recovered by the following: A, depositing of the collateral required for, should be their appearance before a district judge to answer for delinquent payment parking, delinquent parking violation; B, paying the amount of fine, penalty, and court costs, if any, for any delinquent parking violation; C, the payment of the fees as required by the Borough. And what would you like added? What do you think would clear that up?
It's not clear that if the judge, if someone goes before the judge, the judge is going to issue a ruling.
Okay.
So we're going to have to abide by that ruling.
Sure.
So it doesn't say in A, you know, appear before the judge and whatever the ruling the judge issues.
To answer before the new parking violation, depositing of the collateral required for their appearance before a district judge to answer for each delinquent parking violation and compliance with any order of the court or something like that.
Right.
Okay. All right.
Because bottom line is, once the judge issue a ruling, we have to abide by that.
Sure, we can add that in. And compliance with any order. And I'm typing it right now. All right. And I'll email out the fees, we'll look at it and correct there from he and all that stuff and any typos. But so is that language okay with you then?
Yeah, that's fine. It doesn't have to be the exact.
Are those three different options? Or are these all, are these all of the things that get to occur?
These are the things that have to occur. Just adding in.
We previously had a conversation about how the judge was release vehicles without the Borough being paid.
Right.
So it doesn't say or, it says and, right? No, it says or.
Or. Depositing of the collateral required for appearance for the judge, paying the parking violation, compliance with any order of the court, or paying the amount of fine, penalty, cost, if any, for delinquent parking violation. Yeah, you know what? We should add all of those as and. That should be best.
Okay. All right, any other?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe in section. Okay, so now if a car has to be towed and it's now in the tow yard, how do, I don't see any language where it says that the tow yard can't release the car without.
That would have to. Right.
That'd be covered under number two, under police department's report in the parking, I'm sorry, in the towing contract and services. So that language will be there.
Okay, and that would automatically.
Apply to this.
Apply to this.
Apply to this and catch it.
Oh, okay.
That's one of the reasons why we're putting it out.
Right.
Okay, should we put in there somewhere that? I don't know.
So it's just that whoever has awarded the contract will know that they are enforcing this ordinance. So it's for that contract. So that's what's addressed in the next.
Right, and the language from the ordinance will be in.
Right.
Oh, okay, 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 I get it, I get it now. So there won't be an instance where a car is not booted, but is towed.
Correct. Wait, say that.
So there may be instances where.
Booted, but not towed, that is.
Or no, not, not booted, but towed.
Correct, correct. And we still want.
Whoever has that. So they will address any cars towed from Yaden Borough. They'll enforce this ordinance as well as any other cars that are towed from Yaden Borough. So calling the ex for an abandoned car to be towed.
Right.
It may not necessarily have parking tickets and have been booted, but the tow yard will know, because they have the contract with us, that before releasing any cars, that the fines to Yaden Borough have to be paid.
Okay.
So that's part of the contract with the towing company, which is separate from the ordinance.
Okay, all right, because I'm looking at this ordinance and it just says the immobilization of vehicles, booting.
Yes. But for.
But the tow contract will cover any ordinance.
All right, I just wanted to make sure. Okay, okay.
All right. So with the corrections that we've made, can we take a vote for the advertising?
Yes, President Monroe.
Yes.
Vice President Roelklaub.
Yes.
Counselor Beatty.
Yes.
Counselor Truheart.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Pete.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
The vote is unanimous, the motion carries. Next up for consideration, we have the, is to advertise and solicit RFPs. Is to advertise and solicit RFPs. I'm sorry, Mayor.
It was cleared up. I did have a question to point out that it's a booting. We use the technical term immobilization, but in the subsequent discussion, you kept saying it's a booting. So it's a moot point now.
Great, thank you. Consideration to advertise and solicit RFPs for police and Borough towing services.
So moved.
Second.
Having been moved and properly seconded on the question?
Question?
Yes.
On the towing with the tow yard, is that going to depend on who gets the RFP?
Yeah.
They'll have their own?
I'm sorry.
Own the yard? Because I know sometime companies towing, they tow one to the northeast or other distant locations.
So will... Based on the RFPs, we get to decide which... Which tow yard gets the contract?
Madam President?
Mayor.
So right now, it's with Cypress in Lansdowne? So that's where all the vehicles are towed? So this what this ordinance is about, to put that out to bid? Because it hasn't been. It should have been, I believe, but it hasn't been. So it's that one central place, wherever that's decided. As if Cypress gets the... Yeah, whoever counsel chooses to have that contract. Could be Cypress, could be someone else.
All right. Were we moved and seconded, sir?
Yes.
All right. Can we call for the vote?
President Monroe?
Yes.
Vice President Roelklaub?
Yes.
Counselor Beatty?
Yes.
Counselor Truheart?
Yes.
Counselor Trent?
Yes.
Counselor Pete?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
That vote is unanimous. The motion carries. Anything from our fire department? All right. Anything from our emergency management?
I wish I... Three months... So I'm sorry, didn't know our report was done last month. So I will have something for you next month.
All right. And recreation?
My report stands and submitted except I would like to thank everyone who went to the composting workshop. Hope you enjoyed it, and we're going to have a few more here. In addition, we have another workshop. I'm always bringing free stuff. So we have another free rain barrel workshop, which will be held in Morton Borough on June the 10th for residents of the Coalition, and we're a member of the Coalition. While you're there at Morton Borough, you can take a look at... The Borough has contracted nineteen four-legged goats goats to actually remove the underbrush. You may have seen articles in the newspaper, but it was really kind of interesting. I saw the goats the other day. So they're trying to remove a lot of underbrush in the Borough. So maybe that's something we need to look into. Thank you.
That sounds fun.[1685.34]